The other thing is my doing this, I said.
Last time it was Apple time, this time it's gonna be. 6:31?
Yeah, 6:31.
Oh, it's 6:30 now in this time zone. Call the meeting to order. Yes, it's like the lag.
The lag time over here. It's the lag stream.
Call the meeting to order. Public comment, if you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, address your comments to the board and not to the public, and you have three minutes, anybody? Public comments? All set? Alright, item number three, racetrack public hearing, so officially open the public hearing for the racetrack.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'm assuming you would like to speak to it.
I'm assuming you're, I'm the one that you want to ask the questions to. It's been a long day.
Any questions? I have some.
I have some.
I noticed on your, you know, the categories and everything else, I mean, you keep saying 10 hours, 10 hours, 10 hours. I noticed under section two, it says vehicular racing should be limited in total operating hours per race day, including warm-up to eight hours, inclusive.
What we did last year, and the year before that, it actually started with Oktoberfest a few years ago. We asked for an extension, so instead of having a rain date, we tried to get the racing on that particular day. Last year, we did the same thing with May Madness, and we also added an hour to the Isma race, which actually worked great because we were able to start practice an hour early, and we were done, chief, what was it, 10:30? We were done at a reasonable hour, as loud as those cars are. We were all done off the track and done 10:30. No disruption to the neighborhood.
So were you telling me that you're sticking within the eight hours, you're just kind of sliding it?
Well, actually, we asked for an extension, so if we needed it, if we ran into a problem where the track, we lost a track because of a blown motor, whatever, we could run till, start at 3:00 and still run till our midnight after, you know, 11:30, working with the chief to make sure that all the cars are off the track by midnight.
Okay, no questions?
No.
On the sheet that has lots of blue on it.
Yes.
Can you talk to me about the ones in the bottom? I understand in terms of further up, it's a rain date for that particular thing that's above it, I assume. But then, down at the bottom, you have Sunday the 18th, rain date, test and tune rain date. There's a bunch of rain dates, what are those rain dates for?
Oktoberfest. Everything else, we have wiped away planning. To where the ordinance reads, we can have 23 days plus 23 rain dates. Rain dates for us don't work, and it doesn't make sense for the neighbors who don't know if, you know, we call the event when it's actually gonna happen. So we'd rather have minimal rain dates. So our biggest event, obviously, is at the end of the year for Oktoberfest. So we have multiple rain dates for it, to try to make sure we get it in before our November 1st.
I see. So it'll either be like the two dates, you've got the 3rd and the 4th of October, or it could be some combination with the rain dates at the below.
Well, exactly, the 3rd, 4th, and, um, excuse me, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th are actually Oktoberfest, between the test and tune and the two Oktoberfest dates. And then, if we can't get it in, those are the dates of the possibility of getting it in before the end of our scheduled dates.
Okay.
Further question, explain to me the Rusty Wallace again.
Rusty Wallace is a driving experience, it's not any means of driving school that anybody comes out of it able to say they can drive a race car. But it gives them the opportunity to drive on the track. I think it's the most they have on the track at any time, is four cars. All tuned down to the point where they don't have the power where the normal race cars would have, and people can go out there and actually race on the racetrack.
Is there any conditions on that, age or anything?
That would be between Rusty Wallace, because they actually leased the track from us, and it's their deal on our track.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
Any comments from the police chief?
None? Can I ask the police chief one question? I think I know the answer to this, but... There was a few times during the year where there had some noise issues. Can you speak to those in terms of they were handled and there was no problem?
Yeah, well, they weren't really noise issues, they were, we had two complaints. Same person, full-time. First complaint was early on in the season. I was notified by the dispatch center at the time of the complaint. I sent one of our duty units to sit at the end of the driveway to see, and the officer said, "I can't hear anything here." I contacted the complainant on Monday morning, once I downloaded the noise levels. There were no violations of the noise level, explained that to them. And basically, it was a repeat of that towards the end of the year. Just to explain, you know, how the sun carries differently, you know, these are the trees, wind, whatever it is, and they seem to understand that, and we're all set, but there, just that one race, where we had, there was just a tick over, like a tenth of a decibel over the reading for a two-second interval.
But they've been cooperative in their...
Absolutely, you know, what we, typically, we do, especially at the beginning of the year, when there's new cars coming into a division, I'm on the side of the track with the cars come off, and I can hear the vehicles, the louder ones, and I'll let either one of the wrens know, or let Joe know. They'll go right down and check the car, and typically, it's they're running a cherry bomb muffler or something that's supposed to, and they're told, "You can't control that exhaust," and that's how we monitor it. And that's it, but, yeah, it was the only complaints we got.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a couple of comments, since, as you know, I was on the racetrack committee. I attend the racetrack periodically, and we should recognize the fact that they have made significant improvements to the facility, and also from an eco, eco point of view. That facility, if you'd have gone all the way back in the woods, you would have found an awful lot of tires and stuff. They have, all of that's been cleaned up. Just, they have put a lot of money into that track. They welcome residents of Lee free of charge, and residents should enjoy the track, because it really is quite nice to walk back through their, Pat comes every now and then and takes great pictures, and they really have done a great job improving that facility for us.
Can you remind us, what's the procedure if somebody from the town wants to attend?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell us the procedure if somebody from the town wants to attend?
What they can do is they can go to the tax office and get a piece of paper that says they are a resident of Lee. They take it to the window at the Lee Speedway, I forget what the number of the window is, I'm gonna say is 11, yes. Okay, they get the window 11. There's a very, very nice young lady that works that window, and that will take it and put an armband on them, and away they go. So it's very, very easy to do, and they can have a great time there.
I'm good.
Alright, I move to accept the Lee USA Speedway's 2020 proposed operating schedule and grant them a license, subject to the conditions imposed by the Lee's Racetrack Ordinance, including inspections by the building inspector, fire chief, police chief, and submission of certificate of assurance to the town administrator. I think that's it. Yes?
Second?
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to a great 2020. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager. Oh, oops, excuse me. I closed the public hearing, sorry. Okay, now, number four, Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager.
Alright, so, we've had discussions in the past about the coupons of bulky tickets, the transfer station, and I think Julie and I have come to the conclusion that they're extremely labor-intensive between what we have to do with them after they leave there in order to rectify the cash that we take. They're also expensive, and we're almost out of them, so if I were to order them, I'd have to order like 1,500 bucks for a whole entire thing of tickets. So, Joanne and I and Julie had discussed doing away with the coupons, just not doing it anymore. And instead of spending 1,500 dollars on coupons, buy a cash register. I think we looked real quick one morning, and we can get a decent one that could do what we want for around 250 bucks. And we can rectify the till from the printout on the slip, the same ways we currently do, it's just you eliminate the coupon part. And it just eliminates a lot of extra headaches that we have to go through. Because currently, when I bring them to her, she counts them to me, signs it, then I gotta count them all back and sign it, and I just sit there for a while for coupons, when I could be doing other things. And then, as far as keeping track of what goes where, we can have a button on the cash register for each category that we currently have a bulky fee for. So I'd be able to just take the printout at the end, match it to the drawer, and then essentially, we just do the same thing with current bills, minus the coupons.
Hi, everybody.
Also, I think that the original intent of that machine was to avoid having employees handle cash. That's not the way we use the machine, so we're really not using the machine the way that it was intended, anyway.
Yeah, someone brings a 50 dollar bill, it only takes tens and twenties. If they won't give change back, and people show up with a 20 dollar bill and only get rid of a 5 dollar item, they need change, so they're opening the machine and making change out of it, anyway.
Questions?
I don't have any issue with it, I mean, obviously, employees are handling money now, I guess that's Julie saying.
Yes.
Doesn't make sense.
No, they are.
So does this cash register, you're thinking of purchase, have a lock key on it or something? Or is it gonna be opened, loaded all the time?
No, it has a lock key and a way to open it, like most cash registers.
It's certainly not the most secure cash system, because also, as you know, both Joanne and I have recommended that we eliminate cash altogether at the transfer station. So, I mean, we're not asking the board to approve that tonight, but again, I still think that that's the direction we should head in.
I'm fine with this, if you want to take on that responsibility, we'll see how it works.
We're already, we're already doing it, anyway. There's no more responsibility to do that than what we're currently doing.
So where would the cash register be located?
Right in the same building.
So right where the coupon machine is right now?
Yeah, and they'll do, they'll just do what they currently do with it, because they now are leaving the coupon machine open at the end of, where the cash goes, at the end of every shift, because they're hoping if someone breaks into the building it won't destroy the coupon machine trying to get cash out of it. Because one's been done before, there's a broken machine out back, someone tried prying the door open on it. So if it's open, they won't see it, so essentially, they'll just put the cash register in the same spot, and at the end of the day, they'll leave the door open, so they can obviously see there's nothing in it.
Is, what are the cameras pointing to where the cash machine is?
There is no camera inside the bulky fee building. There's one outside, so you can see who goes in and out, but you can't physically see the machine.
But if somebody tried to break in, you could at least see, kind of, possibly?
Yeah.
Does that have infrared? Can you see in the...
Not those ones, the front one does.
No, they all, they all have night vision.
They do, some of them don't go on night vision. But the front one, I know does.
Might be, is that cash, go every day, back to town hall, what happens to it?
Every, every Monday, I go pick it up and bring it to the town hall. There's a safe on the floor in the building. So... There's three people with keys to the safe. Me and the two full-timers, because they're the ones opening and closing, so they have to have one.
So where's the safe located?
It's, it's there. Yes, it's at the transfer station.
They take the money out of the coupon machine, they put it in the safe?
Yes, with all the tickets and the printout sheet at the end of the day.
And the combination is.
Does the police chief have a comment? Or is he...
Count, say it all.
Alright, so we go to this?
I'm good. If you don't mind, I just assume go to numbers to let us see first, it'd just be quicker, and then we can do a little more math, if that's okay? Alright, so, working with the Conservation Commission, Little River Park, down past the planting fields, down in that lower bowl, there's Woodcock Habitat, and there's areas of it that need to get mowed. It's a public, more of a public area, so I just wanted to let you guys know that at some point, we'll be down there with a skid steer and a big forestry head mowing the areas as outlined by the Conservation Commission. And then, the other project the Conservation Commission's doing involves a kiosk on one of the trails, and they wanted locust wood for it, and they wanted it cut from town land, and then Ricky would mill it out. I found three good-sized locust trees on the Garrity Preserve that would fit the bill to get us the size wood we need for the post, and have gone over that with the Conservation Commission, and they were okay with it, but that's right on the side of the road, public, cutting on town land, so I just wanted to give people the heads up. And then, let it be, the roll-off dump truck. So... You guys asked me to come forward with a proposal, so... I've done, I found two trucks, because it's probably the only, there's actually three. There's two of the same Peterbilt and one Mack. The Peterbils came from Mill Steel in Manchester. The Mack came from a company called Hazardous Waste Solutions that's out of business. And the prices that are listed on them are 79.9 for the Mack, and then 89.9 for the Peterbilt. I try to go in, obviously, lower than those numbers. The big difference between the two trucks is the Peterbilts got a lot bigger motor, has an engine brake. The Mack doesn't have an engine brake and doesn't have a tarp system. And if you're hauling 20 tons of trash, an engine brake is a nice thing to have. So, Julie and I sat down and did some numbers. And I went through now, because I just got a thing emailed to me, but our glass numbers that we gave you are low. We've already sent seven dumpsters of glass so far this year at turnkey, no, four for a year. We've upticked on our glass a lot. So, a lot of the, so as you see, the totals are like 33,292. The NRA metal, we don't technically pay that out of our budget, the hauling fee for that. They charge me that every time they come, and then take it out of the profit. So if I make 800 dollars, if there's 800 dollars worth of metal and it's 200 dollars a shipment, I get a check for 600.
So it's the net of the two?
Yes. And like with the big recycling that they come and pick up, that's all included in the price I pay or get per ton, is, the shipping's included in it. The shipyard metal one that's there, and the NRA metal dumpster doesn't always come when I call it, and it's, I don't call it till it's full. Some days, they come the next day, other days, it takes them a week. So we have another dumpster out back, we put overflow in. And then, we have that hauled by shipyard, two hardigs, about four times a year. So, between all those haulings, you can say that we're probably closer, especially with the glass going up, 34,000 dollars a year, we end up paying in hauling fees. So, Julie and I estimated a 90,000 dollar truck purchase. And then, between parts and fuel and labor, it would probably cost us about 25,000 dollars a year to run the truck. My guess is I could make the number go down a little by moving hours around with part timers at the dump. A lot of our hauls happen on weekends, so I can move one of the guys that closes earlier when they're not as slow, and they can make do a guy short for two or three hours while he hauls two loads in the morning. And then, fill in the third haul we average a week, try to fit it in with the highway department as we can in the middle of the week. And then, so the other thing is I had Julie include the bid results, so even if you guys say no on this, which is perfectly fine, I think it should be something in the future we keep an eye on, because as you can see, shipyard came in lowest out of all of them, and they don't have an escalation charge in their contract where the other ones do. So we'll just take Troyon Waste Services. For a regular turnkey haul, not on the weekend, by the third year, they're charging 376 dollars, we're currently with 238. If you do the weekend haul by the third year, it's 556 dollars per trip. I wouldn't anticipate in two and a half years, or two years now, that we're still gonna get the 238 fee. I'd imagine that that's probably gonna go up. So... I'm fine with people tabling it for another year and a half until we see what a bid would come back in as too. And the other issue is currently, the contract is pretty hard to get out of for the current hauling thing right now. And I didn't realize that until the other day, and Julie could probably speak more to that, because I don't understand the contract stuff that well yet.
Well, I mean, if they default on the contract, so they don't do what they're supposed to do, then yes, we can get out of the contract, but, you know, it's a contract.
Yeah, there's no termination involved in it.
Right. Other than the non-appropriation clause.
Yep.
Yeah, Steve, you, there's, which, which truck is it you're recommending?
I would personally go with the Peterbilt, not the Mack, because it's got the jig brake in it, the engine brake, and it's got a tarp.
Is Peterbilt, what year is it, it's a 2009?
It's a 2009.
So there's still parts available easily?
Oh, plenty of parts available, and it's before the emissions standards, so you don't have to put the fluid and stuff in it. There's some emissions stuff in it, but it's not as far into it as we are now. And the Mack's the same way, it's the same parts, or not the same parts, but you can still get parts for it easy and all that stuff.
Okay. Plus it's got a bigger engine and horsepower.
Yes.
What's the, what's the lifespan, like for instance, these 2009, 2010 trucks, how long before you start to put more money into it than it's worth? But is the general consensus is a good for another 10 years?
Probably.
Five years?
My guess is looking at them and how, because we physically looked at that Peterbilt, there's one, it's up in Barrington on the side of the road, Liberty, and it looks in really good shape. The Mill Steel Company that owned them did a lot of over-the-road hauling, which is why they got so many miles on them. But the miles that are on them for the over-the-road diesel Cummins motors that are in them are in a lot of miles.
Do you have a space down in your place to store it?
Would have to probably stay inside the transfer station plug-in.
Oh, and it's not being used?
Yeah, back it into the main front bay, not where the cars go, but on the floor.
Oh, where the compactors are?
Yes.
I have a question with respect to you, you were kind of bouncing around with respect to...
Sorry.
No, not in the sense of your speech, but having personnel do this at the end of the day, moving things around, I get concerned, I mean, it's not like you're overflowing with personnel right now to do the job that you have to do.
Yeah.
This would just be another added responsibility.
Yes.
I want to make sure you stabilize first before we start adding on more responsibility.
It would end up being mostly part timers that would drive it. Currently, as it sits, with part timers in the transfer station, there's two that could drive it. Part timers that plow snow for me, there's four that could drive it, plus the three full-time highway employees. So I have plenty of drivers for them, it's just a matter of shuffling them around to get them in.
And you had hinted that you don't mind it being tabled, so you must have some second guessing.
Well, we can't get out of the contract.
I don't, I don't have the, we can't get out of the contract. And to be honest, I was hoping that the numbers were farther apart. It wasn't gonna cost me as much. So like, the 25,000 includes someone coming in that wasn't already gonna, and at 20 dollars an hour, nine hours a week for a whole year, plus what I thought would cost to run it, fueling, tire-wise. I was hoping that number was gonna be lower, so that's why.
In addition, we'd have to talk about what do we do if the truck breaks down?
Yes, that's the other, that's...
Mr. Bugby's familiar with what we went through with...
And that was my other big thing, is if the truck breaks, and we make shipyard mad, they might just tell us no. The only other way I could think around that is Durham has, is buying a brand-new roll-off, and I'm pretty sure Epping just bought a brand-new roll-off. Has come up with a plan between one of the three towns, if yours breaks, we'll haul for you. If ours breaks, will you pick ours up?
Well, does each of those towns have only one roll-off truck?
Durham only has one, Epping, I'm pretty sure, just bought one, because there's been rumors flying that shipyard's heard that we and Epping were splitting the cost of a truck and doing it ourselves. I heard that like a month ago, so we'll put that out there.
Contract with shipyard goes until December 31st, 2021, so maybe early 2021, we take a look at this again. Because it is intriguing, because especially if these people are going up into the 400 and 500 dollars, then it makes it, at least from the numbers that you presented, quite feasible. Your return on investment is...
I just get, so like, ship, that's a public bid, so shipyard's seen it, and I can't imagine that they're gonna want to leave that much money sitting on the table again, so...
Well, let's enjoy the lower rate until December 31st, 2021, and then maybe before that, we can take a look and see if it still makes sense, especially if the rates are going up. So thank you very much for doing that, Steve. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Item number five, TCVC representing two-story office building in a renovating town hall project. So the TCVC did a presentation to the ABC in the word of Sleckwood, or the Sleckwood, excuse me, this last week. So the TCVC is looking for some... So the T C B C is looking for some kind of, some direction from the town, from the SLECT Board in terms of what to put forward. What are we in support of warrant I F O I's? Because the T C B C has to start their publication education process, P D Q. So we need to know, darn it, so we need to know what the board is in support of, is there things you want us to tweak, to change, are you good with what we propose? We need to know what that is so we can start getting information out to the public in terms of the design and in terms of what the total prop, cost is gonna be. We can have that discussion.
You got it, Stephen?
No, I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little, a little confused to be honest with you. Have a play.
Well, in terms of, we made a present, the, the T C B C made a presentation to the board about what it's proposing. You charged us with a task and we went out and did that task and this is what we've come back to you with. So the assumption is that either you're okay with it, you want us to change it, you want us to say enough's enough, we don't wanna do anything. We need some direction because we're at the end of our particular tax section of the charge.
That's why I guess I'm confused. You, I'm assuming that, that there's a point in time where you have to be ready to take it to the masses.
Yep, that's now.
Right?
That's now, as soon as possible.
There should be a plan that's in place or going or being drafted to say, here's what we're going to do to take it to the masses, right? We're gonna have, we're sure we're gonna have people at the transfer station, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that.
And we've talked about those particular mechanisms, but we need to know what we're transmitting to the masses, what is the plan? Are the board okay with what we proposed? Are they not okay with what we proposed? So we need to know the answer to those particular questions.
Now, let me speak, I think the board has done an admirable job at this point, I mean, the T C B C and I see the totals. And I think we should move forward the way it's been presented. I also agree that we have to do something with town halls or renovation. At least put what we were, was a hundred and fifty thousand, I think you put in there. We have to do something so we can try to get some matching funds at any rate. So I think we should move forward as quickly as we can and see what we can do.
Okay. I don't see where we have, have any, any choices. I mean, let's see what that's.
I, I have a slight concern, but it's not necessarily in what the present materials that was put forward is. You know, if this doesn't go through, what does it leave us? So I'm hoping the T C B C will just have a discussion at this point. This, you know, just in case something like that goes in a different direction.
But beyond right now, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think really what I'm interested in is what is it we're going to present to the, to the, to the public to, to try and sell this thing and, and what's it?
Educate.
You know, what is, what is the total, what's it gonna look like? I mean, there's gonna be questions that, I. For instance, if you show the presentation or whatever, you know, people are gonna say, okay, but what's the plan for the annex? What's the plan for, for this building, that building? What's happening with the library and how does that impact, how does that impact the plan? You know, there's, there's just some unanswered things there, but I think people are gonna question against the, what is the price of the, of the project as you're showing it now? Is that the price for everything? Is there, is there some other things that aren't included in there yet and we're just pushing those aside? Fine, for next year, the following year, whatever, that's, that's kind of where I think my interest lies right now as to where we need to go. But no, I think we go forward, absolutely, and see what kind of reaction we get.
Yeah, the municipal office building is the two point nine one two million. So that does not include any cost for the town hall. Right now, we have fifty thousand sitting in the capital reserve fund, the plan is still, I believe, to put another hundred and fifty thousand in there. The people that we had to come over and start the assessment for the town hall, fifteen, it's about four hundred thousand. So the idea is to put the hundred and fifty in, we'll have two hundred thousand set aside for that purpose. Go for an L chip grant and hopefully we're successful, according to the people we talked to, has a very good chance, it ticks all the boxes that they have. And then subsequent after the town hall, municipal office building is built, it passes, then we'll start working on the town hall after the staff has moved out.
Scott, I'm with you on it. I just, I'm trying to understand how we're gonna answer the questions from the public so that they, you know. I assume there's gonna be a point in time where we're talking to people.
Yep.
And, and, and that they will then raise their hand and say, well, what about this or what about that? We need to be prepared for that, to be sure that we don't have any. What's the word on the, or masked costs that, that, you know, because they didn't ask the question, they didn't get the.
The hidden costs.
Yeah, the hidden cost of things that, you know, are, are part of it. So that's, that's all I'm, I'm really, I want us to go forward, I just want us to have a good plan to get to the people. I think that's always been our problem is we don't, we just don't get out into the depths to, to get the people on board.
So maybe you can fill us in with your plan of how you.
Yes, we've talked about.
The marketing plan, if you would.
Marketing. One of the things we talked about is having an open house in the town hall. One of the things we hear concerns all the time is why do you wanna do anything to town hall? There's nothing wrong with it. So having an open house, I don't know about the feasibility of that, there's not very much space in there. But having different stations in the town hall and just talk to people about whatever those particular issues are. We've talked about publications, getting things out in the E P R, having people talk to people. But those are the things we're looking at, possibly mailings, those didn't seem to work too good. Transfer station, we kind of put that low on the list. We reached a lot of people, but we got a lot of comments. Leave me alone, I wanna drop off my trash and leave. Don't talk to me. We had people that did listen too, but, so we've talked, there's this whole list of, I think there's twelve things that we were considering, so. We meet this next Wednesday, so we can get back to you and let you know what those are, but at least now we know what the project is and now we can start educating people in terms of what it is. That's the other thing we've been hearing in terms of people being concerned, haven't heard anything about this. Why are you waiting, why are you waiting to? So. And in terms of the other question that you brought up, in terms of what if this doesn't pass?
Yes.
Like we're trying to be positive and, you know, get support, but what if it doesn't pass? I think that's a conversation the board has to have. If it doesn't pass, let's say it passes with or gets close to like fifty percent, we're almost there, do we go for another year? The other thing is if it gets twenty percent, okay, enough's enough. We have information in terms of putting the people at town hall someplace else. Going still with the process of going for an L chip grant, renovating the facility and then when it's all renovated, put the people back in. We didn't solve any of the particular issues, but we renovated the building and got it back under spec. So that's something the conversation we have to have as a group.
Absolutely.
And we can let people know that, you know, if this doesn't pass, those were our choices. Because I think one of the things that, at least being on the committee for almost three years now, we wanna see something happen. We wanna see the building fixed, we wanna see our issues fixed, so.
And the grants that we're going after are for the town hall and the parish house?
Those, well, first, first off, town hall first.
Okay.
No parish house yet.
Okay, so the grants that we're asking for are relative to town hall?
Yes, because you don't wanna have two L chip grants competing against each other. So if you do the town hall first, at which we should, then if you're successful in that, then the next year possibly you can do the parish house if the townspeople wanna do that. But yes, the town hall first.
Okay, and the process, and the process for that is in work?
Well, the assessment that we are having them do right now, it's already started, they started, let's see how we can have a go. They've started the parish house and the, the town hall. We're going to get a rough number first part of January, so we'll know what that put on the warrant in terms of the cost. And we think it's gonna be around four hundred thousand. At that point, hopefully a hundred and fifty passes, so we've got two hundred thousand set aside. In May, we have to do a letter of intent to the L chip program, they will say, yes, please submit the application. The letter of intent and the application are almost exactly the same, that is due in June. They will have their meeting sometime in December, they'll announce all the L chip awardees, they just did it for this year, just for.
But you don't have any idea what that award amount would be?
They usually, if we, if it's four hundred thousand, you can ask up to fifty percent, so it'd be two hundred thousand.
It'll be two hundred thousand.
So we have enough money to do the renovation. Usually they don't say, we'll give you forty-eight percent.
I'm just trying to understand how the warrant's gonna read, because I don't, if it's two hundred thousand, then, then you're at another two hundred thousand into the, the cost of the.
Yeah, that, that warrant will be this year and next year. The only warrant you'll see over the town hall this year is for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Next year in December, you'll find out if you're awarding money or not. At that point, you need to go back for another warrant article that says, okay, you've got an L chip grant for two hundred thousand, there's two hundred thousand this, give us authorization.
Okay.
Okay? Okay?
Yep.
Any questions from anybody?
Good discussion. Mr. Tapper. John Tappin, remember the T C B C. Scott brought it up, but I don't know that we really heard a definitive answer. And that was on the idea of the open house at town hall. This is an idea that we think there's a lot of difficulty in doing it, but we think that it has two great benefits. One is that it would not be a fixed program where someone has to come at the beginning like we've done before. When we do a presentation, if you're gonna go to the presentation, you need to show up at the beginning and you're expected normally to stay there for the whole presentation. If you hold an open house, it could be over a period of two hours and people could show up at any time. So we think that that might get more people to show up because they're not making a commitment for a specific time and to stay there for the whole program. They could come, look at it, say, eh, I already know this and leave in ten minutes, or they might stay for a whole hour out of the two hours. Also, by holding it in the town hall, one of the big problems that I think hasn't gotten out to the public about town hall is what a poor working environment it is for the employees or staff that works there. So if you hold an open house and you have multiple stations where you're trying to convey information, it's doing that in a poor environment, which is demonstrating the poor working environment. So people are observing that, yes, your finance officer is hearing everything else that's happening in the building while they're trying to concentrate on what's very important work and same thing with all the other staff. So I, I'd like to hear from the board, is this something that we could do? Obviously, we have to ask town staff about it, but is this something the board is in favor of doing?
I thought was to have numerous, I don't know how many in terms of number, different stations, like maybe one station talking about financing, one station talking about floor plans, one station talking about energy things that people can add. And so people could go to where they're interested, maybe they're just interested in the cost, I don't care what it is, how much is it gonna cost me? I've heard people say that numerous times. Some people are saying, well, okay, you're building this new building, how energy efficient is it? Can we have a station for those particular things? The concern we have is there's not too much space. And we'd have to be careful in terms of what was out on people's desks, so we probably have to ask you to cover it up, but put it away so nobody can see anything that's, you know, not appropriate. Not appropriate meaning it's confidential, not, not that kind of inappropriate.
I know nothing, I hear nothing.
Well, let me speak to that. Actually, I think it's a pretty good idea. I, I think it's an opportunity, obviously I have to be coordinated with the town administration. I'd love to go a little bit farther. It makes me think of Strawberry Bank when they have little holes in the walls, you can see the, how terrible it is in there. Too bad we didn't have a periscope somehow to the.
Underneath.
Or you have Julie in her white little uniform standing there.
We got those pictures out?
Yeah, we can put those pictures out.
Open it up, let them look at it.
Open it up, I was gonna say, you've got a hole in the floor, you know, you could, you could put a mirror right over there so they could see the rest.
So I'm kind of going a little radical, but if people actually see, even though we've had picture in the prior and so forth, if there's a mirror like that seeing the basement, that carries a lot of weight, the visual, so yes, I do support it.
Mr. Brown?
I'm with the board.
You got it?
So we'll see, schedule your time. One of the things that we've sent out, Trish, the last two times we've done this, we've sent out mailings and things and some people get in, some people don't. We asked people, no, I don't remember that, you know, so it's kind of like, it's kind of expensive, it's like nine hundred dollars, but if it's getting no traction, we thought this might be a better way to do it in terms of see if we can get people in to see actually, because people come in, they do their taxes and stuff, they go into the newer section and then they usually, they usually don't come into the older section. Not that people don't come to visit you, Denise, but more people go visit task left than they visit you. Any other comments? Anything? Anybody? No. So I guess the T C B C has their marching orders. So, and we meet this Wednesday at four thirty and then we meet on the thirtieth at four thirty-two, so that's glad we missed the time. Anybody else?
We're good.
Item number six, A B C, April twenty-one, budget recommendations, Mr. Murdock.
Hello, hello. Another year.
Yes.
So, I don't know, is this okay? If you can hear me. I don't have to get heels. So, A B C recommendation to the board, funding for budget year two thousand twenty-one. Recommend that the recreation capital reserve fund contribution be zero. Recommend that the O O A be funded for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, at fiscal year two thousand nineteen funding, which was twenty-eight seven. An increase from last year of funding of fifteen thousand as the A B C could not agree on or justify the request that they gave us of forty-eight thousand, six seventy. They're basing that on supposedly usage of what our kids and a percentage of the administrative costs and so forth of that. The bottom line was if our, if we gave less, our kids from Lee would get less assistance to be, and it would cost them more for each program that they ran. So that's why we're trying to give them something, but not the ask that they gave us, that they requested. Recommend funding for full-time police officer that was requested and the full-time fire position. The advisors agree that the public safety is a priority and encourage the orders lockman to develop. We said a ten-year program, but could be, could be a five-year program or over ten-year program. We need to develop some kind of a, a, a program, we think, to plan for, and it can be modified based on population, call volume, future needs, to address the staffing needs of the fire and the police departments. Recommendation that re-evaluation fund contribution be reduced to five thousand dollars. Recommendation that the town building C R F contribution be reduced to thirty-five thousand dollars. Recommend the recreation, oh, the creation of a town building and equipment maintenance fund for fifteen thousand. And recommend that thirty-eight thousand to the town center project, town hall capital reserve fund and that a hundred and twelve from the town building C R F be earmarked for the town hall renovation. I think that was so what you guys just talked about. So if for some reason it doesn't pass, then we can still have that money to renovate the town hall. So bottom line, A B C recommends approval of the budget for four point nine. So bottom line, ABC recommends approval of the budget for four point nine.
Any questions for Mr. Murdock?
None at this time.
Thank you.
So just one brief comment. As I tallied the recommended operating budget from the ABC, it's four million three hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Oh, the splitting.
Right, the operating budget. And I calculated that to be a five point two one percent increase over the current year.
She's splitting out the warrants from the operating budget.
Okay. So we were four something, weren't we?
Four million nine hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
By the percentage? Yeah. So...
Any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Kimber.
Larry Kimber, chairman of the Recreation Commission. I understand that we're not going to get anything put into our capital reserve that we requested.
Yeah, that's because I believe, I should come back up, okay. I believe that is what we discussed. That was set aside for the tennis court. And we had talked about the tennis court not being something that we're gonna do anymore. That one's gonna be ripped out, is that...
We haven't come to any decision on that at this point.
When we were having our discussion, we thought that that was, that tennis court is not gonna be refurbished or whatever, that you needed the money for that. So is it being zeroed out or is it, we're just not contributing to it this year? Yes, so it's not being zeroed out.
No, I, no, it's not contributing to it, is my understanding, because we...
Until we know what we're gonna contribute to, like, do we want to talk about a future tennis court at Little River Park or whatever we then...
Well, what we had discussed is the fact that we don't have... What we had discussed was that we don't have a cement slab in the pavilion, which was what was supposed to go in there in the first place, but because we overspent on the pavilion by thirty thousand dollars, we don't have that. We need to, we need to put in that cement slab somehow.
There's, in the recreation, there's thirty-three thousand five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents as of the thirteenth of this month.
Correct.
So you could possibly use some of that for that particular purpose.
That was what we discussed, yes.
The presentation we had from the CIP people last...
There was nothing, that, that, there was nothing, no requirement in the CIP for the recreation, that, that there was, they didn't need anything. That's what came in on the CIP.
My other concern is that, to take back to the commission, is the exact rationale in regard to increasing ORYA. We were trying to keep that down and keep our budget as neutral as possible, but to now bring it up by thirteen thousand plus dollars was not what we had recommended. Also in my discussion with Ben James, that the ORYA was supposed to be weaning themselves off of town support. I believe that you had just said that you were concerned about, that you were adding more money to it because you were concerned that the Lee residents wouldn't get as much services. I believe that's what you just said.
Well, not exactly.
That was a concern and that to me would be discrimination.
One in time, yeah.
That to me, my understanding of that is the rationale. Why would ORYA discriminate against the Lee residents? Because that, that could be a big issue.
Yeah, they're not discriminating. They're, what they said was that we, they have fees and expenses and administration costs that they took and took the percentage of our kids and how many programs they're in and, and how many kids and divided it out and said, this is what your kids' cost per program that they're in will be. And to be able to keep it at that rate, we need forty-eight thousand six hundred and whatever dollars. So this is what for our, our kids in the programs, it's gonna cost, you know, whatever the number was. You know, a hundred and fifty dollars worth of administrative fees and whatever it was. Or fees for, for each, and varied by program too, but it was like a percentage of the program. So if we gave all of it, then it would stay at that reasonable rate for our, our kids. And we didn't want to have, another issue was kids that couldn't afford any of it. So we were talking about, you know, scholarships to them and so forth. But, so we decided to give a portion of it so it wouldn't go up significantly for our parents, for our kids that are in these programs. So that's why we justified...
So Larry, the, the, the services will be the same for all students, no matter if they're on scholarship or if they're from Durham, Lee, or Madbury. The difference is, is how much is each of those particular entities gonna subsidize the administrative fee that those particular parents are gonna have to pay?
And what about the towns, Scott, that don't pay into ORYA and their children get to participate also for a very minimal fee increase?
Which children? I'm, I'm not sure.
From other towns that participate, such as not again.
I, I'm not sure. They, they shouldn't be getting any subsidy, as far as I know.
They, no, I've had that discussion with Ben James and yes, children from other areas outside of Lee, Madbury, Durham can participate in ORYA. They pay basically the same amount, but about twenty-five dollars more per program. Those towns are not contributing into the cost of this. I think that that needs to be looked at and I also think that you really need to look at their financials. There's some very high fees in there for some reason.
One of the things that, at least I had a problem with, the rest of the committee can speak for themselves, is the amount they're designated, for some reason they think, and I'm not sure where this came about, is the administrative fees would be covered by the three entities, the three towns. I don't remember ever agreeing to that, but whatever. But some of the things they're including, I think should not be included. So that's why I personally didn't give them the whole amount or support the whole amount. Durham was asked for seventy-two thousand, they're only getting twenty-some thousand from Durham. So their Durham residents are gonna be paying way more than the Lee residents. I'm not sure what Madbury's doing. But if you figure the forty-eight versus the twenty-eight, so it's a little more than fifty percent, maybe sixty percent. So the fees, whatever the fee is, the Durham, the Lee people are gonna be paying that much less. So we're subsidizing those particular Lee people. So Durham, Durham residents are gonna be paying even more because they're not, Durham's not even subsidizing them really that much, so it's about a third.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that from a recreation standpoint, that we're able to service more town people with the dollars that we have, rather than, as I, as I discussed at the ABC meeting, that we don't have a lopsided balance sheet here as far as the funds available to those that are not participating into the sports program because there are other sports that not only kids, but other residents,
Other activities.
Other activities are looking to accomplish. And that's why we asked for the increase, which we do appreciate that increase.
Yeah, because the ABC supported that, so...
Yeah. Okay.
We'll see if the board supports that, but the ABC's supportive of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There's gonna be a public hearing on...
December thirtieth.
December thirtieth. And so that's the next time to look at the particular heads of the board and discuss. But it means that that would be the time. All right. Anything else on number six? Number seven? We love it.
So the board may recall that a number of months ago, you approved moving forward into solar power purchase agreement, post revision energy. And so since that time, I and members of the revision team and our attorney have met and spoken and gone back and forth with the extensive documents that you've had in your agenda package. I feel like I need to, and I know we talked about this the last time you looked at all of the numbers, but again, you know, the numbers are very tight. The analysis of this is very tight. So really, it looks like at best, it's going to be revenue neutral if everything turns out the way that revision lays it out. I know that there will also been discussions that perhaps we would purchase the array after the fifth year. And even if we do purchase the array in the sixth year, they anticipate that we're really not gonna start saving money until year fifteen. So it's a long-term proposition.
Comments?
Well, other than being eco-friendly, what's the benefit?
It's eco-friendly.
That's it, that's it.
I mean, and that's, I don't wanna discount that, that's, that's not nothing.
Well, it's, I, I understand.
But, but yes, that's...
All I'm saying is, it's kinda like the solar, is that all there is?
Right.
What, what do we... Nothing is, I mean, there's gonna be costs involved. And I, and somewhere along the line, I'm sure we're gonna have to share some of those costs, whether it's damage to the array, other, other things.
Well, unless we cause the damages to the array, for as long as we're under the power purchase agreement, they're responsible for maintaining and running the array. Because we are just, again, as long as we're under the power purchase agreement, which we have to be for at least five years, we are simply purchasing the power that the array generates. We don't own it.
That's for the first five years.
For the first five years, or however many years after that. It'd be all, for as long as the array keeps working, we don't have to purchase it in the sixth year. But in order to ultimately get the biggest bang for your buck, you purchase the array.
The other thing we have to remember is we're into this already for a cost because the legal counsel, legal people going back and forth with their legal people. So, earn expenses.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you remember, I voted against this originally and with these numbers, I'm pretty adamant, you know? I'm, I like to be eco-friendly too, but it has to make financial sense and this does not, for me, make financial sense, so... I'll make the motion, but I'm gonna be against it anyway.
I'm underwhelmed by it. To be honest, it's a half a million dollars, five hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight a year at, at the total, right there.
The current, that's the current bill.
That's the, that's the current bill.
In other words, that's what, right, that's what we pay.
So we go to the, of the solar savings, a sixty-one, well, I'm sorry, a million. Solar, ten a lot of hours, I don't want that.
You don't want that.
We want the PPA, the P, well...
No, you want the last column on the right.
Five hundred and thirteen is the net cost.
Right. What you want is the last column on the right, which are the savings.
Sixteen thousand.
At over twenty-five years.
Over, yeah, over twenty-five years.
And the reason that these are slightly different from the numbers that you originally saw is that we, there's a pilot factored into this, a payment in lieu of taxes. Unfortunately, although it seems ludicrous to me, we can't get around the state law that they will be leasing a portion of land from the town and then therefore required to make a tax payment, which ultimately, the way it works is the PPA has the cost of the pilot built into it, which is only five hundred and forty-five dollars a year. And then they pay us the pilot every year. So it's, it's a net neutral in terms of the cost of the pilot, which again is only five hundred and forty-five dollars a year. But that's now built into the PPA. I know, it's very confusing.
Well, I just don't, I just don't see it. I'm sorry, I...
Well, but I, I just wanna make it clear that the numbers were always very...
They were always very slim.
The numbers were always very iffy, yes.
You know what? This is, this is kind of even below iffy.
I'm glad that we went through this process and, actually, I kind of agree with Mr. Brown.
Is it iffy? Is it iffy?
Yeah, it's iffy.
It was never iffy for me, it was just, it wasn't, it was too...
Well, I was hoping I'd start seeing more proper margins somewhere along the way, but it's not gonna happen.
And, and me too. If it made financial sense, I'm in, but I'm not seeing...
Now, again, this is all based on what our current electrical costs are, what they anticipate, the utility rates are going to increase over the years, et cetera, et cetera. So there are a number of estimates, let's just say, going into this.
The first five years, it goes from a savings of year one of four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-eight cents all the way up to year five, which is a savings of five hundred and eighteen dollars and five cents per year.
Right.
For that amount of money, I'll keep the trees that are on the property that the town has and is part of today.
I agree with you, I, it just doesn't, it's...
Actually, we made more savings by changing these light bulbs.
The risk, the risk, the risk is greater than... Yes, yes. You have to manage risk in this job.
No, absolutely. I mean, the risk and the liability of it just, it just doesn't fly.
All right, I can do a couple of things. One, I can make the motion and I cannot get a second, then it dies. Or I can just not make the motion. How would you, gentlemen, like to proceed?
Can I, I, I mean, we don't have, we don't have a signed agreement with revision that said, we're absolutely doing this. I'm not looking forward to the phone call tomorrow, but if the board is no longer in favor of it, then the board's no longer in favor of it.
I guess we...
I would do the motion.
Do we prefer a motion?
Question?
Why do you prefer a motion?
It would, I would prefer a motion and a second, a discussion and a vote. It would be cleaner.
Mr. Tapp.
John Tappin, one eighty-seven Steppenstone Road. And I'd just like to ask the board if they have considered or would consider an alternative for those that say this is a good thing to do, is what if the town was to, on its own, outrightly purchase a much smaller array where a much higher fraction of the energy generated was used behind the meter, was used on-site rather than being sold at the lower cost back to the power company? And that's something I haven't heard anybody talk about and just ask the board if that's something they might think about as an alternative.
I would be open to that discussion.
Oh.
I saw him in.
Oh, I just put my finger up on it.
Thank you.
Look, it had a cramp or...
I'm supportive of what he was saying. Yeah, I'm, I'm amiable to that too. If it makes financial sense, I'm all in. But this, to me, does not make financial sense because there's too many liabilities and there's too many things that can change. And I'm not willing to go and put the town in that position at this particular time. But yes, I'd be amiable, if there's something that makes sense, you know? That'd be great.
If there's, if, I would, I would ask, I would ask John to approach the Energy Committee with that, just with that, but Lou's right behind you, so it'd be... But anyway, you know, to, to look at that and see, but I, I just don't see any sense of going, going ahead with this right now. The, the numbers just don't, they're not impressive at all, as far as I'm concerned.
And I'm a broken record, the numbers were never impressive.
No, they weren't.
No, I understand.
I thought it was a little bit better than what you said.
They were never gonna get, they were never gonna get better.
I have a question, in terms of this, that you've written. These two motions, or they, can I do them together? Yes, there's a big and there.
Yeah, it, there's two sets of documents that need to be executed. There's the power purchase agreement and the license, license agreement with revision. And there's the documents that need to be executed with the New Hampshire Electric Co-op.
So if I move the first and we vote no, the second becomes move?
Correct.
Okay, so I move to approve the twenty-five-year solar power purchase agreement and license agreement with revision Solar Impact Partners LLC as presented for the purchase and sale of solar-generated electricity, electric energy from the solar panel system to be located on the western side of the public safety complex. Do I have a second? She's suggesting a second. Okay, we can wait, gentlemen. No second?
No.
Motion dies. Okay? Is that official enough?
Uh, date tomorrow. Yes, I will let the board immediately know.
Thank you.
Will the town administrator be calling in sick tomorrow?
Well, there is a snowstorm.
Oh, yeah, that little snowstorm.
I will, but all seriousness, let you know what revision's reaction is.
Okay. You will, you will cut out the inappropriate language though, right?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think. When the town secretary and I attended the New Hampshire Municipal Association Conference, one of the sessions that we attended was the obligation of municipal websites to meet the requirements of the ADA. And it was really eye-opening, for no other reason than, as you may recall, we recently went through a complete overhaul of our website, and at no time did Civic Plus tell us that all of these requirements were out there and have been out there since July of 2018, January 2018. So the website has to be accessible to people, for example, who are vision impaired and who may have special software at home or at work that enable them to read, quote-unquote, "read" documents with the special software of our website. If something on our website, and there are many, many documents on our website that are PDFs, if a PDF is scanned in, it is really just a JPEG, meaning it's really just a photograph, and therefore, it's not readable. So for that reason, one of the first changes that we're going to be making is that all of the minutes that we typically give copies to everyone, and this goes not just for the select board, but every board and committee, the typical practice is for those minutes to be reviewed at a subsequent meeting, signed by the members, after it's been approved, it comes back to us, it gets scanned in, and then it goes on the website, so it's obvious to everyone that the minutes have been approved. Although as a side note, there is no requirement that minutes be approved, but it's a good practice and it's what I think almost everybody does. In order to fix this problem, what we are suggesting now is that minutes still be reviewed by the relevant committees and boards, they still get approved, so you'll see that reflected in this next set of minutes. But the statement simply be typed on the Word document that says these minutes were approved by whatever board or committee at such and such a meeting. And then Denise will convert that Word document into a PDF, put it on the website, and in that way, it's quote, "readable." We're still working to try to figure out how we're going to make other aspects of the website ADA-compatible. So we're still working on that. One of the other things that we also need to maybe try to figure out is how to get the videos closed captioned. So far as I've been able to determine, it's pretty expensive if we go out and hire a company to do the closed captioning. YouTube, as you know, our meetings are on YouTube, YouTube will provide maybe a somewhat rudimentary closed captioning, which I think we'll probably try to start doing, just so that we have some function there. So just be aware as we go forward that if we ask everybody to shift how we've been doing things, it's so that we can be in compliance with the ADA as it pertains to municipal websites. Any questions?
The minutes I did for the TCVC, whether that was okay?
Yes.
With the, because I've stuck on that was approved and no signature, and I sent you the Word thing.
I need the Word thing, is what I need. And again, we're going to ask, I think Denise has already asked, but we're going to ask that all the boards and committees are doing that. Apparently, there have been lawsuits that have been settled or won in other states over municipal websites, so I think maybe places that are larger than us, but we still have to comply. So the next item is the budget calendar. Again, you may recall, a number of weeks ago, the board approved the budget meeting calendar for the year that we're in. Since then, Mr. Bugby has requested that the board discuss merging the second public budget hearing that is scheduled for January 6th with the regular meeting that was scheduled on the 13th, which is also the new municipal building bond hearing on January 13th.
Oh, please, say please, agree. I, I love meetings, don't you know, but if we could remind those two, I'd rather not come out on the 6th if I didn't have to, but...
Well, we ask it, is there any overcrowding on the 13th, town administration?
I'm assuming that the TCVC is going to give some kind of presentation the night of the 13th, because it's a bond hearing and that's what...
Oh, yes, and the bond hearing, but not the budget.
The 13th.
Yeah.
The bond hearing.
Yeah, not the 6th.
It is also a regular meeting. And then it's the second public budget hearing, so a significant amount of work to be, gets done at the second budget hearing. Because we do not, right now, have a third scheduled. We've been able, in the past couple of years, to make do with two public budget meetings.
Well, we'll probably get a lot of stuff done on the 13th anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm pretty comfortable with that. I say, let's go to the board.
Mr. Brown, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Change all the public notices.
We'll keep this in mind, Mr. Chairman, that we're you the favor in the future.
I think so.
I'm going to take care of you under number 11. You better be nice to me.
We're on TV.
So...
That was blackmail, that was...
You also may recall that at a previous meeting, there had been a request of the board that the town offices close at noon on December 24th, which the board approved. Mr. Bullock just wanted me to confirm that that also means the transfer station. Because it's a Tuesday.
Yes, why not?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
He did it equally.
He just needs to be open on the 26th. That's when the big...
That's when the stuff hits the fan.
Yep, yep, all that rapidly goes. Can I, can I, since you're talking about dates?
Yeah.
And before Denise gets herself into trouble even more, I'd like to propose that December 31st, we close the offices early as well.
Okay.
I wasn't thinking noon, I was thinking two o'clock, but...
Okay.
Thoughts?
Well, I'm all in.
I think you two o'clock.
Except for your office.
Yeah.
Let me do that.
Yeah.
Does any of the staff have a problem with that?
That's New Year's Eve.
Yes.
New Year's Eve, no, thank you. Take that out.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock on the 31st, everybody except Denise. Because Denise has to stay because she's a bad girl, so.
I think we'll, we'll stick around.
Oh, there you go.
Just stick around with her.
It's always one.
Yeah. Note for the tape that Karen Rossi has rubbed her nose back and forth.
And that, what do you, that, the Tuesday, so that one, the transfer station, yes.
So if you can appropriately signage and put an e-cryer that those dates are... We have the 24th in there already, but the 31st, so people, you're...
Thank you.
And that's everything I have.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, that's not paid.
I will be out all Christmas week, but I will be reachable.
Christmas week, you'll be reachable.
I will be reachable.
So they don't need you, you'll just review the manifest on the 30th, will you come back?
And I hope to have all of the things that need to be ready for the public hearing ready this week, so. I already have the warrant drafted, so it's lengthy.
And you even have one of the warrants for FY22 already drafted?
I already do, that just, yep. Already have an FY22 folder.
That was the assessments that they're having done on the town hall and the parrot house. The monies are going to come in after we expend them, so they're going to be considered revenue. So to make things clean, we have to put them back into the capital reserve fund for the town hall.
I got you.
So the town administration tested, not this year, but the next year. But then we'll know all the numbers and we'll know exactly how much it, how much it is. Anything else with seven? No? Item number eight, motion to accept, I move to accept the consent gender as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No? Oh, those who have ever say aye?
Aye.
Do we have a variant to do that?
How many do we have to sign? The manifest is already been signed.
I'll go a point.
It's a lot.
Okay, wait.
Yeah, let's hold the rule.
All right, so item number nine, I move to enter non-public session, New Hampshire RC 91-A-3, two sections A and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call vote Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. LeCorse?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby, motion passes.
May I ask that you meet with myself, with Lisa, with Karen Rossi first? Then they can go on.
It's not the same for every style.
Mr. Tappin? I have a question for you.
Okay.
Can we spend money on the recreation budget to put a cement floor in the pavilion? I put him on the spot.
He came out of that to, to pay for the pavilion, I believe.
No, he, he's kind of really asking, are there agents to expend?
No.
That's what he wants to know.
Oh, jeez, I can't spend.
No, I didn't recognize the question.
I knew what they were getting at.
I was kind of going over your head, sorry.
There's very few that you are not the agent to expend, but that's one of them.
That's one of them.
The smaller, what I refer to as the smaller library capital reserve fund?
Correct.
Is another one.
And fire equipment is a big one.
And fire equipment.
And that, that is, the recreation has been a problem, there was...
That's my pen, get your own pen.
Is the request okay for the law?
Julie, do you have a pen for this gentleman?
I can't, it'll be green.
Keep that mine. Denise, next time, bring extra pens.
Well, we have lots of pens, we have lots of pens.
For God's sake, let it go, John, let it go.
Would you all like to seal those minutes or not?
We haven't got there yet. Don't rush us, we're old.
We're tired.
They backtrack number eight.
Yes, we're going to sing Kumbaya in about 10 seconds.
Of course.
Well, you're the singer, John, so you should be...
Get him started.
Why is this thing stuck like that? It's supposed to be a Denise thing.
Oh, I stapled it because it's a Stalin thing. Because these pages have a way of losing each other.
Who's the manager?
Just the campers.
Huh?
The campers, they're a real good solution to it.
Nothing has to be signed, Denise? That goes you down. Goes with that one, yes.
No, there doesn't need any, it's what's going to say.
No, no one will be needing it.
Nothing there.
No, nothing in.
No, you don't sign them anymore. You don't sign them anymore. I shouldn't have included them.
It's not my pen.
Did I show that?
No, it's not my pen.
Is that Eric's pen?
No, the towns, the towns.
The towns.
All right, number 10, I move to seal the non-public session minutes, section A, or the A section?
Yeah.
No, and, but C section, we're going to seal it. So I guess I'm, sorry, I take that back. I motion to seal the non-public minutes from section C.
Gotcha.
Not A.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Mr. Brown? Yes, aye?
Yes.
Mr. LeCorse?
Aye.
Mr. Bugby, aye. All right, number 11, we did my number 11 already, so my number 11 was the...
The December 31st?
Yeah.
Okay.
And make sure the minutes show that it's everybody except Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Anything else for number 11?
From the planning board's point of view, we did the final details of Bedrock Gardens. The bond has been done, and the final landscaping plans have been completed. So they are very much on their way.
So they'll be opening for 2020 season?
That's what I understand.
Two and a half years in the making.
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Mr. Brown, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right, good. I move to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Those who have ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, jeez.